Hey Kiara, good evening and welcome to It's in the Ballot this Tuesday evening. Now apologies for the different version of it being a remote show tonight. We had a bit of a venue clash with Waora, so that's the reason why we've got remote here. However, we've got five fantastic candidates from the Northern Ward who are going to be going over tonight on why they should become the next councillors for the Takapu Northern Ward of Wellington City Council. So as we can sit there and get into it, let's get first up with Ravine. You're up first. Why should you become the next, one of the next Northern Ward councillors at this upcoming local body elections?
All right, Kiara, good evening to all of you. And it's important that I wanted to be a councillor to give back to the community. It's been a great journey for me being here in this country for the last 16 years, doing a lot of community work in the multicultural council of Wellington perspective, multicultural New Zealand, Rotary International and so on. So it's time that me and my family decided that it's time we want to give back to the community of Northern Ward and build a thriving city in New Zealand. Wellington is a city that I love so much and I want to give back to the people and the community here through my work that I've done previously. So I'm walking into the council with lots of job that have been done before, not just walking in to seek a position as a councillor. Thank you.
Okay, not a problem there. Why have I got a logo over my name? Okay, so just want to ask, what part of the Northern Ward do you live in for the viewers at home that have an idea of where you live?
I'm currently residing in Tawa Redwood Avenue.
Okay, nice of that. Next up, we've got Tony. Now, just to flip everyone across the screen there, your opening statement on why you should become one of the next councillors for the Northern Ward?
Well, so I'm standing as a councillor. I've lived up here in the Northern Ward. I'm living in Johnsonville with the family over the last nearly three years, so I know the place. And on the resident association, so the council committee association. So I've worked with the council over the last 10 or so years. I've found, working with them has been good or bad for various times, but in the last three years really they've stopped listening to us and started doing things to us instead of for us. And I don't think that's right. I think the council's really gone on to the wrong track. They're not focusing on the basics as a priority. They're not focusing on listening to the suburbs and their own residents as a priority. And so I want to stand as an independent, non-party aligned councillor and just go try and get a voice at the table for the Northern Ward and just tell them maybe it's about the basics, about doing the basics well, about listening hard and sometimes accepting that the answer from the, for some of these proposals is no, thankfully, not at the moment. And that's why I want to stand. I think I bring some skills. I'm a business analyst, I understand business cases, I've managed large budgets and I've brought some analysis skills as well. I'm a public transport advocate and so I do understand that area, but there's many, some areas I'm less comforted on, but all in all, I think I do understand suburban living and I love living up here and I want to have a voice to make sure that as we grow, and I do support growth, that as we grow that we preserve the good things we have in the suburbs and let more people have access to that. Thanks.
And just for those at home, what part of the ward do you live in?
Well, as I mentioned, I'm in Johnsonville on the Truscott Avenue. There are signs outside my house, so you can easily spot it. And yes, you know, certainly been there a long time, so I had a chance to be in every place at various times and visit people and friends.
Okay, next up Jenny Conde. Why should we reelect you as a Northern Ward councillor?
Kiara, thank you Sam. I just really want to be able to keep working for the city. It's been a really interesting three years, sometimes challenging. And the most important thing for me and the reason I got onto politics was for my children and thinking about how we're going to make the city future proof for them so they can have a really successful future. And for me, that means we have to figure out sorting out the housing crisis and the climate crisis at the same time. And if we're going to tackle both of those problems at the same time, we have to look at housing growth, which allows for more density and also more options for transport so that we can actually accommodate more people in our wonderful, amazing city and find ways to reduce our emissions. So those have been really important issues that I have been working on. I also came up to speed quickly on water infrastructure issues when I was on the Merrill Tassels for Three Waters and was the lead author for that report. And I really want to be able to continue working with that expertise because we've discovered water infrastructure is a really important area and making sure that we are funding our infrastructure properly. So we're looking after what we've got first and that has to be our priority when we budget. And then we look at investing in climate friendly infrastructure that will set us up well for the future and some other things that might still be wonderful projects for the city may have to wait a little while while we sort those two things out first. But those are the priorities for me and we know that Johnsonville and Tawa are going to be seeing growth in this area. So we need to make sure we've got the water infrastructure, the transport infrastructure and the social infrastructure that can support all of that, which is what I'll be working for.
And just like we're asking every candidate there, which part of the ward do you live in?
I live in Tawa, thank you.
Okay, not a problem. Next up, we've got Ben. Your opening statement on why you should become one of the next councillors for the, was it Takapu Northern Ward?
Yes, and the others. Yeah, look, I've grew up locally and I've always loved Wellington, but at the risk of sounding a little bit Jenny here, it all comes relative when you have a child, you start getting a lot more of a longitudinal perspective on the things that matter to you in your life. So I love growing up in Wellington. This part of the city that we have is actually pretty unique. And I think passionately, I believe that our best days do lie ahead of us here in this ward. Waukeah are a growth corridor and there's a lot of growth and things coming our way and there are challenges. I just see a huge opportunity in that. We have stand more than any area of Wellington to really stand out over time and develop how we can grow. So for me, my priorities are housing, housing and housing number one. We can't function as a city when we price out our essential workers and those on low incomes by having the highest rents in the country or house prices for the nine times the median income. We have to make changes in those space. And then we, and growth doesn't have to be inherently negative thing. I think there's a bit of a fear. Some of it justified in our area, if you look at how Chertan Park has grown historically, it has not been particularly encouraging to what, building a really valuable and cohesive community initially. Took 20 years to get anything more than a dairy. So taking a journey where we actually build communities, great communities, great public transport, great infrastructure and great retail and great shops and we tarted the potential up this way and we just go for it is what I want to bring for the Takapu Northern Ward.
Okay, and one of the questions I'd like to ask, which part of the ward do you live in?
Like Tony, I'm in Johnsonville, but on the opposite side in the eastern hills. Beautiful view of Johnsonville's heritage mall and concrete car parks from my lounge window.
Oh, yes, yes, that topic of that mall's been on the problem for I don't know how many years now and the whole time I've been a storeholder at Johnsonville Market. Next up, we've got finally, well, I think we've actually had more than one John on the show, but we had what was the most common councillor name from the 2016 and 2019 trillenium of councillors in New Zealand, Ben John. Welcome. I better put you actually into the, into the chief seat.
Cool, thanks Sam. Yes, my name is John, John Apandovich. So I'm a born and bred Wellingtonian. I was educated here as well, went to West Park School and Rawa and the ward and then also to Victoria University where I graduated with two degrees, one in economics and one in accounting. I run my own consultancy firm specialising in finance and corporate governance. I'm a chartered accountant for 25 years and I've got the badge to prove it, which is great. And I'm also a chartered director, so I'll be very active in the Wellington area for a long time, worked with substantial amount of entities in Wellington, but not with council, surprisingly, directly with the council. I'm a rotarian as well. I want to bring sort of local champion with a strong voice to the council, someone who can advocate for the local residents and someone who has a degree of experience and knowledge around what's the key issues are. So I live in Oharua Valley, so sorry Sam, cut that one pretty quickly. And I have done for the last six, seven years, I chair the Makro Oharua Community Board, so it's an elected position as well, but it's slightly different from the Wellington Council, though we interact regularly with the council, but we are a rural community, so we have our own base of specific issues primarily around all the things that affect normal residents as well. We have our own water supply, sewage system, et cetera. So I love infrastructure with a lot of infrastructure projects and essentially the councillors were probably the largest infrastructure entity in Wellington. So I think I can make a good contribution for the people of the Northern Ward.
Okay, and thanks for answering the question about Oharua Valley. I do know that myself, the many trips where I've driven down that road, oh God, it feels like a long and slow road and, but I don't know if you want to make it straighter because you probably don't want the boy races on the road.
Definitely not. So my, my daughter along with a lot of the other residents' horse rides, so we actually have to use the road regularly to move horses around, so preferably not have boy races because I think it would be quite dangerous.
Okay, now I haven't done the electorate video because we got straight into candidate statements, so give us an electorate video to find out exactly where the boundaries are in the Northern Ward to see where you are and also find out a little bit of the things like John just mentioned about the, was it, the, was it Makro Oharua Community Board? You've also got the Tawa one. Let's kick it off. Takapu Northern Ward, Wellington City Council. The Takapu Northern Ward is Wellington's most northern ward. It is represented by three councillors. For the boundaries, the boundaries start from the bottom of the narrow on a gorge around the top of it, round suburb of Newlands, around the suburb of Johnsonville, right out to cover the rural areas of Oharua, round to the coast and then back up over the hills to Tawa, through to the back of the Takapu Valley and then running down the ridge to include Horakewee. It is one of the few wards that has both coasts of Wellington Harbour and the Tasman Sea by the Cook Strait. Now let's get to the important part, phone system. The Takapu Northern Ward has three councillor positions available at this upcoming local body elections. To vote for them, you'll be using the voting system, single transferable vote, better known as STV. Please also note that some Northern Ward voters have additional elections to be voting in. If you live out in Makra or Oharua Valley, you'll also be voting for the Oharua, was it the Makro Oharua Community Board, which holds six positions. Also, if you live in Tawa, Granada North or Takapu Valley, you'll be voting in the Tawa Community Board, which also holds six positions. When it comes to voting, rank the candidates in the order of preference. You can rank as many candidates as you want, or as few as you want. And I want to make sure I have got those community board numbers right. John's probably the best one to answer that as being a current board member.
Yeah, so definitely six in Makro Oharua, which has actually been surprisingly been a three-three split with Makro and Oharua residents. Tawa, I think also has two appointed councillors of the three, is that correct Jenny? So they have a bit more weighting than what we do in the rural area.
No, certainly right. Okay, so we'll now get to the ballot box questions and today we're in a virtual sense, only because I can't really set this up to have a whole nice ballot box table behind him. So we found a compromiseable solution in the situation. I was trying to get the work office today to sit there and do that, but things did not go to plan and we decided to give Ray a night off, who's usually our normal video editor. So with it's in the ballot, our candidates one by one sit there and choose the box number, what they want, and then they've got to answer the question in it. With it's in the ballot, we don't use this one of do we take the money or the bag? We use the term of you chose it, you brought it, now you've got to answer it. With the, keeping with theme, same with TV show, It's in the Bag, we have got two baby questions. One of them is called dodge the question, the other one's called defer the question to another candidate. If a candidate chooses one of those two boxes, they get to keep that as a get out gel free card that they can use at a later date and then choose another box number to keep the show going. With the principle behind it is they don't use to get our gel free card to get out of it, because if they do, what are they trying to hide? As some of the questions can sit there and be done with. So first up, we've got Jenny, you get to choose the first box number. What box number would you like?
Four, please.
Four, that's a great one, way to find where four was him. Okay, so it's number, question number 24 on the question sheet. Do you support the use of masks especially indoors as an important tool for keeping COVID at bay and others safe?
Thanks, yes, I really do support mask wearing and I think it is important that our council facilities have, have been following government guidelines and requiring masks. Personally in our family, we're continuing to wear masks, particularly trying to encourage my kids to wear masks at school because that's where we're getting most of the bugs from and can't expect them to wear them if we're not also willing to wear them as well. So we are still wearing masks in our household.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, we've got John, what box number would you like?
I'll take number five, thanks Sam.
Number five, okay. Now I've got to scroll up the list. Gee, I love this system, I love our backup system. Okay, so it's number question nine on the question sheet. What are you going to do to ensure young people's voices are heard and actioned to keep our city vibrant and growing?
We had a similar sort of question up in Newlands a few weeks ago and my answer then was the fact that I listen to them. Depends what age group you're talking about in terms of young. I mean, I have two children, one is 23 and the other is 20. If it's that demographic, then I can actually talk to them quite regularly. If it's the younger demographic, I'm quite happy to meet up with them, with their parents as well. Parents obviously also come through and talk about what, what young people like to do. So short answer, I'd listen.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, Tony, once I, yep, thank you, I can sit there and shift it. What box number? You've got to turn on your mic, please.
Hi, just tried box number six, thanks Sam.
Box number six, ah, that is an easy one, I can find that one. Okay, so this comes from a cycling advocate. I cycle to work every day, yes, even in the interesting weather. What are you going to do to support me as I help you reduce congestion and flight climate change? Please be certificate and address safety concerns of cyclists. That's question number 10 on the question sheet for my remote editor.
Right, so I support introducing cycleways where there's serious safety concerns. I'm thinking for example in Northern Ward between Tawa and Winchester Drive in Chertan Park, I mean, that's a rural, that's a rural area with fast roads, windy, narrow and it's also a really good place to walk and cycle, so I support that. And that's I don't support the broad bike plan. I think the, the introduction of cycleways right across the city really needs to be looked at on a suburb by suburb basis because all our suburbs are different. And so I would, you know, in terms of where you, where you cycle, I'd certainly be happy to look at what the best path is. I think each major suburb should have a cycle path that comes in and supports safe cycling. So that's my approach.
And I gather you'll be working alongside with many residence associations on that, including the one you're currently president of?
Absolutely.
Okay, next up Ravine, what box number? You might have to, oh, yep, you're mute.
Yep, number 10.
Number 10, okay. Okay, so it's number question number 28 on the question sheet. What will you do to bring in household food waste collection to stop this waste from going to the landfill?
The first thing is the current WCC policy is quite positive. That is implementation of the minimisation of slight, sludge minimisation that has been worked on at Moa Point. So if that works well, that could be a trial run elsewhere as well. So I think we are working on that. If that works well, then we can have that tried in elsewhere. That's my question and so.
Thank you, okay. Now, just wait for, yep, that's where we are. Next up, Ben, what box number?
What's the highest we can go? Is it 30? Let's go 30.
Okay, and funny enough, it's question number one on the question sheet. Should Wellington City Council social housing first be offered to those who are locals?
Yes, I mean, yeah, if you're talking about should people from other regions come specifically to Wellington to be sorted by, supported by our community housing, then no, I think the people that are already in Wellington get preference on that basis. I feel like there's probably something more behind this question, but maybe not quite elaborated on, so just going to take it at face value and say yes.
Not a problem, okay. So we've got through the first round of questions and on my lovely random order sheet, it has put Ben up for the next one to ask, choose the next box number. What box number do you want to choose?
Oh, we'll go one then.
Okay. Okay, so question number 14 on the question sheet. Internationally, cities that are nicer to walk around are considered better places to live. What will you do to improve the experience of pedestrians in Wellington such as wider footpaths, less on-street parking, more green space, protection from the wind and rain, et cetera?
Yeah, so we have a labour platform that I helped design alongside our other six candidates that are running across the different wards here. And one of the key parts in that platform was the implementation of a citywide walking strategy for safety and accessibility. And I had an email from a resident today who specifically wanted to know if I supported things around those measures. So that's the number one. The other part that was in that email that I feel is tangent to this question was, you know, talking about people that are using footpaths for, you know, micro mobility, so e-scooters or e-bikes or cycles and the like. And the quick answer is we actually need to get those off footpaths because footpaths are for pedestrians. Someone going 20 to 30 kilometres per hour, no matter what device they're on, presents a clear and present danger. And that's where, we call them cycleways, but I just see them as basically future, you know, transport corridors for micro mobility comes in. Yes, bikes can use them, but it's also where the opportunity of e-bikes and scooters comes through as well. So those are the things that I'm backing as part of the platform. And in terms of protection from wind and rain, I don't really know if there's much we can do for you in Wellington on that one, unfortunately. We take our weather as we get it in the city.
We could Fairmont, Fairmont Street Courtney Place, for example, if you know where Fairmont Street is in Las Vegas?
Ah, yeah, true, true. I'm not sure if we quite have the budget in the city council that's lying around for such grand decisions at the moment, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's definitely a point there. Okay, Jenny, what box number would you like?
21, please.
21, okay. Okay, okay, it's question number 17 on the question sheet. Many people want to cycle around Wellington but live up and down steps and don't have anywhere to store a bike. Do you support the provision of secure weatherproof bike parking on city streets so that we can keep their bikes in the same way you currently support car owners? I'm not sure if that's a personal one or if it's a council policy though.
Yes, I do. We've recently actually just put through a traffic resolutions to remove 11 car parks around the city that will be converted into bike parking so that we can support people as we roll out more of the cycleway plan. People need somewhere secure to park their bikes. So that's, that's something that we are starting to do and I think we will need to do a lot more of to support the cycleways as they grow and something I will continue to support.
Okay, next up, we've got Ravine, what box number?
15.
15. Okay. Okay, question number 19 on the question sheet. What are you personally going to do to role model climate change action? Bike to work every day, go zero waste, eat a plant based diet, et cetera?
All three implementation is important for climate change. Reducing the emission, carbon emission, reducing the food emission and reducing the, yeah, that other areas that we need to work on. And I love that part of it, climate change is a personal interest to me. I will create awareness and build a strong platform if elected. How do we convey this message to people correctly and create awareness so that many people can be part of the forum to understand what is the urgency of climate change? What is so important about climate change? How Bhutan has transformed into a beautiful country in terms of climate change? We have to look into all that areas where we can bring great awareness to the people and the public. Thank you.
No problem, okay. Next up will be Tony, what box number?
Can I have box number 10, thanks?
Box number 10. That's already been taken.
Sorry, let's go with seven then.
Seven, okay. So question number 25 on the question sheet. What will you bring that is different from the current leadership? Unmute please.
Yes, well, as I outlined in my introduction, I think the current leadership isn't as good as it should be in terms of listening to feedback from residents on some of their proposals. So I'm certainly listening a lot harder and being more, I think, a more engaged councillor. I want to be an accessible councillor as well. I want to go to your community board meetings, to visit sports clubs, get out and about because I think that's part of the job. I think the third thing is, I bring, well, there's some, you know, different sets of skills, but the set of skills I bring in terms of some analysis on transport spaces, I think a little bit heavier heading than some of the leadership and it's certainly been a passion of mine for quite a long time. I've always been a very big supporter of the bus service and it's a tragedy about how the bus service has really been neglected and really is a failure at the moment and really needs to be shaken up and championed properly because it's a critical, it's critical for so many, so much of what the city is trying to achieve in terms of affordable housing, climate change and, and also just making the city accessible in a sustainable way. So that's where I'm a bit different and maybe I have some extra oomph in terms of the current leadership.
Thank you, okay. Next up, John, what box number would you like?
Can I have box number two, Sam?
Okay. Yeah. Trying to think where the number two get hidden. Okay, question number 23 on the question sheet. What is your immediate action plan for upgrading decaying and failing infrastructures such as water, sewage, water and stabilisation of hillsides for critical routes and suspending non-critical projects?
Well, I think council have just gone through a major project in terms of the long-term plan, which has increased funding in a large number of these particular areas. I know if you look at it from a surge in a water perspective, there is the three waters proposal, which don't particularly favour, favour. Stabilisation of hillsides, we've seen the last couple of winters, it's dramatic sort of slippage. winters, it's a dramatic sort of slippage and slips occurring. We get them out in the Hari Valley, um, it's just the type of soils we have, the clay. So they're working with, with, in the council to ensure that there's adequate, um, fixing of these issues as quickly as they happen, I think is quite a key one.
And, um, how's Takara Gorge Road looking at the moment, considering that's in your backyard?
Yeah, we, we, we discuss it regularly at our community board meetings. Um, we, we've, we have an issue there where there's such a large volume of water comes through, um, that it tends to wipe out the, the road. Um, and this is why in common throughout Wellington or other councils is you appear it and then you wait for the next event to occur to do it. So the council's working around that to look at some additional strengthening. Um, not sure of the timeframe of that, but it is an issue because of course that's one of the two arterial routes through to, um, Macro Beach.
Well, and makes it very difficult for you to get to a meeting, uh, get to some of the meetings when the roads close and have to go via Corori.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah, okay, so we'll get off to round three. Tony, you're up first, um, what box number?
Please enter box number eight, please.
Eight. Get it there. Ah. So number 30 on the question sheet, you get the booby question, uh, booby, booby card of the further question to another candidate. So what replacement box number would you like to have while you'll have your pretend, um, booby card sitting magically have now appeared in front of you?
Uh, thanks, uh, yeah, I'll have number 18 then, thank you.
Okay. Ah, question number 27 on the question sheet. Why should I vote for you? No political jargon, please.
Well, that's a, that's a good question for me. I'm not a political person, I've not stood for council before or anything like that. I, I'm really coming in as a pragmatic, uh, person who's lived in the suburbs, have loved the suburban life and I think it's got a lot of value. Um, I, I think people should vote for me also because, uh, I look at, uh, at, I look at issues, um, in a very, uh, in a more analytical way. Um, when offices are presenting, uh, options, I want to say where's the evidence, where are the benefits? Uh, what's it going to cost? And sometimes the cost is too much and I think this council hasn't said no enough to some of the proposals or, or challenged them more strongly. I think lastly, um, I've worked, you know, across the community through the Johnsonville Community Association and, and as a public political advocate, uh, with lots of other people. And I do know that, um, not one person doesn't make a difference, uh, it's a team and it's a group of people and you need to work with good people. Uh, and I'll, and at this point I will say that I think all of the candidates that are standing on the northern ward, those that are here and those are not, I think they're all good people. I'm really pleased at the friendliness and almost camaraderie that we've, we've had during this campaign and it's a testament to the quality of the candidates that you all watch. So please think about that. But yes, I, I think working with a class of other people, I have experience with that, so, um, and had some good outcomes and had some wins. Because getting stuff done in the end is also what it's about.
Okay, uh, next up, Ben, what box number?
Uh, twenty-nine.
Okay. At least I can start from the bottom going up this time and I bet you it's near the top of my list. Yes, it is. It is question number three on the question sheet. What's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering on that?
Uh, so it's actually Pro De Granada, well, it's not pro, it is De Granada North Sports Park. So that's a, um, proposal that was first floated in 2012. If anyone's ever been up that way, um, to the existing fields, when you get to winter, like you do at the moment, they turn to bog, it's all built on old dump land and it becomes virtually useless for most of the sports codes that it's meant to host. So in classic Wellington fashion, um, this got announced with much fanfare in 2012 and then it just sort of stagnated and stagnated and then a little bit of life again in 27 and then it stagnated. And credit to the current council, they have now funded it in the long-term plan, I think 13.2 million dollars is there. Uh, funding it though and building it are two different things and we've got all our merril candidates who've said they're going to, um, take a sharp look at spending and I'm not opposed to doing that. It's always good to just check we're on the right track. But projects that are funded and haven't spent a cent are ripe for the culling in that kind of environment. So that's priority number one, how did it? Well, uh, one of the things I wear as a badge of honour, I think I can say fairly that I probably have the best relationship across all three of the leading merril candidates and that's not the city others don't have good relationships to, but Tory, Andy and Paul are all people that I've talked to on a one-on-one basis on a considerable amount of time. So my plan there, I've already been in the air of all three of them about them saying that if you're there, this is priority number one. This is what we need to do. So I'm going to just make myself very inconvenient and make it so that they, doing the Granada Park and getting it funded and built will be an advantageous part for them and working with whoever our two other Takapu councillors are, if I'm there, um, as a block and a team to make sure that that doesn't fall onto the chopping board.
So how far from Guadalup Crescent is it? Cause I know where Guadalup Crescent is because that's where Uncle Richard used to live.
Yeah, so it's basically all those sport fields that are right around Guadalup, um, as you come in. So you go past the, um, actually, sorry, wait, am I thinking of Granada North now? I'm gonna have to, sorry, Granada Village, not Granada North. Hold on, I'm, this is the advantage of doing this on, um, the computer, I can open up different maps as we're talking.
You can figure out where it is.
Oh, so I'm now thinking of Jamaica Drive. So, so Guadalup and the like, uh, Granada Village, uh, this is Granada North. So we're talking about Jamaica Drive, Queen Drive, um, Nassau. So you take the right turn off the highway, you go for the industrial part and then you come up to Granada North Park, where you've currently got, I think it's three sports fields. Um, but yeah, they are just basically soccer fields and bearing to, to condition and just to sell what this is. So it's, um, proposed to have some astroturf instead of soccer fields so that it's actually weather dependent, some new indoor facilities, some walking tracks, biking tracks and a whole bunch of planting as well. So it's a really exciting facility and idea for our ward. Um, it's about the only thing in the long-term plan that is specific to Takapu as well. So it's fair, I think, in terms of we've got five wards paying into the council kitty, but we get this one back as well.
Certainly fair enough and at least that gives a bit, bit of a better one considering I, I originally thought myself, uh, being Granada Village because yes, you're right, there is that place up the top of Granada North, but a lot of people wouldn't even know that it exists.
Yeah, although we all in time have a road linking through there. So the road linking Granada Village to Woodridge is under construction now, that's been resource consented and then probably Granada Village into Granada North will be the next stage of that. And you'll actually have a whole new arterial road running through that north-east part of Wellington, which is great for building some more housing and getting some more public transport routes commissioned.
Yes, I, I remember when they first, um, connected them Winchester Road East to, um, Granada Village. I remember actually that happening because I remember for years using Beasley Ave to get to Uncle Richard's place was, was the way that we've always been. Um, next up Ravine, what box number?
Number seven.
Number seven, okay. Ah, that's already been taken by Tony a bit earlier. Need another box number.
All right, eleven.
Eleven. Okay, so question number seven on the question sheet. Wellington has been no, uh, was it known for its vibrant youth scene? What are you going to do to make sure young people can drive change in the city?
All right. Youth is our future for this country and youth is a big voice that personally I've been involved and working with. Uh, currently I'm working with about 50 over youth, 35 of them are based in Mark Avenue and remaining 20 of them are based in Tawa. So, which I have about 55 people that I'm working. They have been a big pillar of support for my campaign and I want to create a youth development project, in particularly in the northern suburb region and could expand that to the city, uh, vibrantly, working together with the current WCC, uh, Youth Advisory, Advisory Council. So I, I, that is my area, that is my forte and I'm playing a big role on that. And I'm always, uh, positively would like to have the youth strength cultivated, motivated, give them an opportunity, give them a choice and work with them to listen what they can deliver in terms of projects, in terms of community perspective. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up we have John, what box number?
I'll take number three, please.
Okay, question number 16 on the question sheet. The council has committed to normalising today a Maori in Purnukhui. What will, what will you do to ensure we achieve this?
Thanks, Sam. Uh, yeah, very important question. I think, um, along with most government departments, there's been a, an uptake in Tabor Maori, um, through sort of, uh, engaging specifically with, uh, the Maori community. I think in terms of the council, um, there are sort of Ei representatives sitting on there, which is, uh, which is a good thing. So it does start to normalise as well as also having a new, um, Maori ward, which, uh, the, uh, Maori residents of, of Wellington can actually, um, vote for.
Okay, uh, next up Jenny, uh, what box number?
I'll take lucky 13, please.
13. Always reminds me wherever I hear thirteen, I think of, um, Shannon, um, removing their thirteens. Okay, so question number 15 on the question sheet. Bike theft seems to be out of control right now, showing that bikes are very popular but, uh, uh, but disappointing for their owners. What will you do to stop bikes thieves being able to easily steal bikes in Wellington?
I've already had a question about this, but the, the biggest thing we can do is to ensure that we have safe, secure bike parking for people. Um, and we've had real success with the bike parking that's provided on Gray Street. And I think really moving to provide parking like that in other parts of the city, around the city will be the most important thing that we can do to help, um, keep people's bikes safe, especially e-bikes because they are a pretty significant investment. So we need to do what we can to look after them.
You're certainly right there. I do think some of the e-bikes are worth just as much as the same thing Galaxy Flip and, um, I think might be worth as much as their video broadcasting computer, thinking about that. Okay, so we're off to another round. Uh, John, you're up first, what box number?
Cool, thanks, Sam. I'll go for the last of the single digits ones, I'll go for number nine.
Okay. Okay, question number 26 on the question sheet. Should councils be funding and organising community events?
Oh, I think that's given, Sam, yes. I'd already done a lot of significant events and I think, um, they're well appreciated by the community and not just in one location, but through, they should be throughout the, the whole of the Wellington region.
Okay, um, now what, uh, now, this is what happens when you, Ravine, what box number? Did you put the mute back on again?
Sorry, number 16.
Okay, so number 16, yeah, where are we? Okay, question number 11 on the question sheet. We know we need to pay for, pay now for essential upgrades that the previous councils have avoided because of the pushback from homeowners and fear of rate bills. What will you do to stop pushing these expenses onto the younger generation and ensure this city is maintained as it should be?
Um, uh, well, uh, it, it's, it's really unfair to push back to the younger generation because we want to build them up. So it's not fair to push it to the younger generation. But, uh, we need to look at, uh, funding opportunities, uh, to boost the economy. Through that, uh, we can subsidise on many avenues how to gain income. Perhaps, I'm not too sure, uh, from what I know, the, the airport expansion could generate a big sum of amount, uh, to subsidise on many other funding areas. And also bring back all the staple events that has been postponed and cancelled. Bring back all the events that will generate a huge income rather than passing back to the younger generation. Because younger generation are just starting their life and we should be motivating them to do well rather than pushing them back. So let's, uh, ju- just generate all the funding that we can to boost the economy and the funding of the city. Thank you.
Well, the sounds of it, we're going to keep having Newtown Festival being funded, um, which, which I definitely can tell you, Martin Inna will be very pleased. Uh, now Jenny, uh, what box number would you like to pick?
Twenty, please.
Twenty. Okay, question number 12 on the question sheet. Some councillors have actively supported hate speech against cyclists. Do you think this is appropriate and what will you do to stop it in the future?
Yeah, I think it, it's really unfortunate. This is an issue where, um, people can get really heated and, um, perhaps don't always cover themselves in glory when they're speaking on this issue. Um, and I think we, we just need to work really hard as a group of councillors to always remind ourselves that we want to hold ourselves to a higher standard. Um, and I certainly do that where I feel like councillors are perhaps stepping too close to the line during a meeting. I, I'm not afraid to, um, call that out and just make sure that we, um, that we're behaving respectfully and, and we, um, we all need to behave with, um, the respect and professionalism that the office requires.
Okay, um, next up, Ben, what box number?
We have to start having a list of what's available now.
I know, it's when I come across and I've read something, I know that's not.
I've got a list.
I'm just working backwards.
The numbers.
So I think 28 is still good.
Ooh, I don't know.
Next is.
Okay.
No one's allowed to go anything from 30 to 25, that's my zone.
12 is the lowest and 27 is now, will now be the highest.
Okay, now I'm just trying to find where 28 is on the sheet. Ah, okay, it's question number four on the question sheet. Do you support more housing in the ward? And if so, how and where would this be achieved?
Well, a hundred percent and I wouldn't be running if I didn't. That's the heart of it there. Uh, the two places where it's most suited to do intensifications, obviously Johnson Ball Mall area, the flat there and Tawa Main Road because in Tawa we've got fantastic public transport links because you've got one of the best rail services in Greater Wellington. And Johnson Ball, um, when the buses do function and I know Tony would be having a laugh right now if I could see his face, but when the buses do operate, we have a fantastic bus service. It's just not such the case as of recent times. So though, and you of course have the Johnson Ball Railway line as well. So those provide that provision. So what we lack in New Zealand for housing and like being a youngish person myself, who's owned a home for three years, we lack intermediary housing. You rent and then you're suddenly meant to buy a three-bedroom house with a garden and that's not what everyone needs. In my mid to late twenties, I would have been in a position to happily buy a one or two-bedroom apartment in the city, but that housing just didn't exist. So that's the type of housing I think is really important. It's the kind of housing that also means you get thriving communities. Talking to the manager at Common Ground the other week and I sort of, what's the best future for Johnson Ball for your business? He said, if we could have apartments across the road and a movie theatre and the people to support that, that would be thriving for Johnson Ball. That's absolutely what we need and I think that's a signal from other Johnson Ball businesses. So those are the primary type of housing, but we also have a lot of greenfields development that we're earmarked for. I think 2,600 homes in Lincolnshire Farms and Granada and maybe another 600 up Stebbings Valley and Churton Park. So 3,200 homes coming through. So basically if it puts people under a roof, I'm for it.
Okay, and, uh, we could have, um, it's in the ballot highlight show as the first screening at the cinema you're suggesting. Um, next up, Tony, uh, what box number? What just happened?
I think we've got a stuck.
Uh, I think Tony's connection has gone, gone a bit, uh. Okay, that's awkward. Okay, his, yeah, and his connection has just come out with here going, read, no connection whatsoever.
You might need to move on to someone else. Oh.
Here's Tony's back. So you've, uh, come back to the universe. So what box number do you want to pick?
I was saying 28, so, um, I'll go 17, thank you.
Okay, question number six on the question sheet. I believe we more, need more housing for everyone than we need drafty heritage buildings. What will you, how would you support more housing against the naysayers in Wellington?
So first of all, I think that housing needs to be enabled across a lot of the city and the new medium density residential zone does that. So people can put three-story, three-story buildings on the same section anywhere in the city. And that, I think, is a good thing. It supports the organic growth and densification of the city. I think the Christian, the Christian is somewhat of a bit of a bias there. Heritage, one. You know, I'm not a very big supporter of self. Here, there's a conflict. Parties, I know heritage building where is real value there and I'm equally not. Yeah, I'm not coming across very precisely on this one, but certainly Wellington does need more housing. And I believe it needs to be, have permanent growth where it's going to provide good access and get the developers and the homeowners to work that out. One last thing though, I do have to note, and that is where you've got a six-story zone, high-desky zone, it's going to have a big impact on the neighbourhood and what a concern. They have is that, that it can't be developed focus. And it's very little that a neighbour can do to stop a six-story building going straight upon their neighbourhood boundary. I think there needs to be some moderation on that now that we've got this ability to have densification across the whole city.
Okay, thank you for that, Tony. Okay, we've got our next round. John, you're up first. What box number?
Cool, I'll go for the last number, which is twelve.
Oh, this is a good one. Question number two on the question sheet. A council resigns 12 months before the election. What would you propose to do for the vacancy?
Did you plan that, Sam?
I, I can tell you, it has come from a Northern Ward resident. But no, I did not plan that to land on you, though. That was the part I was a little bit surprised with. But they do, that question has floated across many different shows. And I do know that in the hut, people thought it was to do with David Besett.
Oh, did they? So just, just for context for the viewers, when Malcolm Sparrow resigned from the council outside the 12-month period, the council had the option to appoint another candidate. And I was nominated by Shaun Rush to be that candidate as I was probably the next highest polling candidate after Peter Gill, who did not want to be there. But the councillors in their thought process decided I wasn't a suitable councillor at the time. So they decided not to appoint me, which is why I'm here standing, so I can get votes to actually be elected as a councillor. So in my situation, I would go for the next person on the list to ensure that there is actually adequate representation for that group of people, because the Northern Ward have only had two councillors for the last one, one year.
Okay, next up, Ben, what box number?
I think we're at twenty seven, hideout.
Oh, do we have, no, I, oh, yeah, no, I don't think I've asked that one. Question number five on the question sheet. This year, there will be a Maori ward councillor. How do you see Wellington City Council achieving true co-governance of Maori?
Well, we've got two Mana Fenua representatives and a Te Fanganui Atara ward this year. And hopefully Matthew Dewiti, my fellow Northern Ward resident and good friend, is going to be there representing Labour as that councillor. So firstly, vote one, Matthew Dewiti, if you own the Maori ward, please. In terms of getting there on co-governance, those are the people that are sort of, yeah, it's their job to show us how we can get there. It's not really my job as a Pakeha New Zealander who's grown up in a pretty white family and not maybe as exposed to that type, to cultures as some others to lead that way. To a sense, it's to listen here, say, what do you need? And then to be there willing to back them and support them a hundred per cent of the way.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, Ravine, what box number would you like?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. Yeah, now it's down my list. Okay, question number twenty on the question sheet. Oh, have I? John, can you check, has that number been called number fourteen? Because I think I remember reading that question out.
Number fourteen? No, it's still, that number's still there.
Okay, no, that's fine. It's the question number twenty on the question sheet. Wellington City Council has committed to normalising todayo. How much todayo do you speak and what will you do to increase your use of todayo? And no, I have not read out that question. There was one very similar.
All right, an area, an area that I'm working on. So I favour this question very much. Yes, I use pretty much of Trier Mori in many of my speeches and many of my, many of, many of the time that when I speak to people. And I've got a lot of love, passion towards Trier Mori. And we, my organisation that resides in Wellington, created a partnership, collaboration with Trier Mori Language Commission. And we are the first one in the country to run a pilot project with them, which the classes are starting in Northern Ward in Newlands on the sixteenth of October, where people can enjoy Trier Mori language lesson free. It's a free classes for everybody and for the community. And with that note, today, City Council wrote to me and say, since you are doing the classes free and you're motivating people to learn Trier Mori and you're opening it to the community, we are going to endorse the Newlands Community Centre as free of charge for you without any charges. So the teachers have been sponsored by the Trier Mori Language Commission. Wellington City Council is playing a pivotal role in terms of promoting Trier Mori language. So they came on board and said, everything is going to be free. So I play a big role in terms of the Trier Mori. And in terms of national level, I'm doing a lot of the Maori whis around the country. We have done one in Rotorua. The next one is going to be in Auckland. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, we've got, Tony, what box number do you want?
Yes, I can have number twenty four, please, Sam.
Okay, let's sit there and search where the hell did I, where the hell did the twenty four end up being placed? Ah, this one I think you'll absolutely love. Question number thirteen on the question sheet. The council has pushed through some big and expensive projects, particularly Let's Get Wellington Moving and Rapid Transit. Do you think you're up to, up for the job?
So absolutely. The council was very affected by these, these big projects. And I've been actively involved in putting, in working with the city council going right back to 2009. It's when we got together and we had a petition. They got 1,200 signatures in favour of the new law at a time where the city council was trying to protect the goal of Maori. Maori didn't happen at that time and it's still, still hasn't happened. I, I've also been actively digging into the Let's Get Wellington Moving costings. And I'm finding the lack of transparency very, very disconcerting. We've got billion-dollar projects and makes you don't know how much things cost. And so certainly as a councillor, I'll be much more able to stand in front of them and say, don't show me the PowerPoint, show me the spreadsheet, show me how much these things are really going to cost, where the benefits really are. Because I think we've been, you know, they seem to have more spin doctors than actual analysts on those projects. And, and these projects need to be challenged because it's big money and it's big change. We need to get this, this sort of transport benefits because our city has suffered too long without major investment. But that, that investment needs to still do the right things. And I certainly have the confidence in myself to step up and ask those questions. And hopefully represent that, make sure that the benefits are spread right across the city and that people are taken on the journey when they come to be asked for paying more money and rates to fund these things. So thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, Tony. Next up, we have Lucky Last for the quick box questions. Jenny, what box number?
Nineteen, please.
Nineteen. Ah, this one I think you will definitely love. Question number eight on the question sheet. It feels like every progressive project in Wellington gets stopped by those that don't like change, i.e. judicial reviews for riding projects. How will you ensure we get, we can become a better city to live in and not be stopped by the NIMBYs?
The reality is any decision that council makes can be subject to judicial review and we can't actually control that. What we can control is two things. One is doing a lot of engagement and consultation and trying to do that as well as we can so that people feel like they have good information on a journey. And even if they don't agree with the final decision, they understand why it's been made the way it has. That said, even with great engagement, there will be people at the end of it who aren't happy with the outcome. And so the next thing that we can do is just make sure that, that when we do have people who are trying to stop a project and do take it to judicial review, is to make sure that we've done everything properly, that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's, we followed all the proper processes so that the decisions that we make are defensible. And I think that's what we've seen, for example, in the case with Whomn Key, where what they found was that the council had done everything properly and those projects can then continue to move ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. And we are off to take a quick break to give our candidates a bit of a rest up for, and we'll be back in a couple of minutes' time for hard-hitting questions. And I'll find a little jingle that we can play in the meantime. I think that was a bit of a mistake by me there, but hey, this is what happens when you have everyone trying to get, get back and ready. So we've had our quick break and we will now fire in for hard-hitting questions. And the one part I forgot to do was take the file off the video editing computer. So we're not going to have breaks on tonight, but that's something to remember to load and to re-stream it. That we've only got about three more shows to go, four more shows to go after that. So with hard-hitting questions, the questions are effectively directed at all candidates who are standing anticipating on our show. Unfortunately, we don't have the answers for the ones who have chosen not to participate in tonight's, it's in the ballot show. So we can't get their answer, but you can pretend what they answered or whatever you want to do. But you can always direct it to themselves, direct it to them personally. So let's kick off with hard question number one. What is your position on free waters reform and why have you come to that position? What? Okay, it feels like it's been put in twice into the sheet there. Let's kick off with John.
Thanks, Sam.
Put John into that. Yep, there we are.
There we are. Thank you, Sam. This is a question I'm getting asked quite a bit. My position on three waters reform, I'm against it. I'm not in favour of the convoluted governance model that's there. I think it's bureaucratic. And I think Wellington's actually part of the way there with Wellington Water.
Okay, next up, Tony.
Yes, this is a, at and about, this is very, very common, probably the most common question. It's three things I want to say about this. First of all, fixing the pipes is the most important thing. And certainly irrespective of whether the reform goes ahead or don't go ahead, it's the council's job to make sure that it represents the interest and make sure that as much progress as possible. Secondly, three waters reform is not a choice that councils have been consulted on. I think about the government is pushing ahead with three waters irrespective of what people are telling them. And then it's not a question, it's, and lastly, the governance of three waters is a real problem. This has been noted by the Audit General, who insists that the governance arrangements is very problematic. And I agree with the Audit General. I think the governance arrangements for three waters is very problematic. There's a lack of accountability. We don't know who's really going to make the final decisions. And so it just seems wrong in a, in a New Zealand government entity. So overall, I'm against it, but I think we've still got to work with it if it goes ahead and doesn't probably get out of it.
Okay, next up, Jenny.
Thanks, Sam. As Tony said, this is not a decision for councils to make. This is a decision that has been made by the central government. That said, the three-water reform proposals are consistent with the recommendations that the Mural Task Force for Three Waters came up with. And they're really the only practical solution that I've heard for how we're going to pay for the significant upgrades that we need for our water infrastructure. So that's one thing that often gets overlooked is that one of the key issues by setting up these entities is enabling them to borrow more. I think we do need to work with the government to improve and strengthen the governance arrangements and especially looking at how we can strengthen local voice. Because it's really important that some of our local community groups, like the Friends of a Fero Stream groups, can have a chance to have their say as well. So those are the things that I think we need to really focus on and work on as we move forward.
Okay, next up, Ravine, what, what's your position on free waters reform and why have you come to that?
My, my position is very straightforward. I'm not favouring the three waters at the moment because it's going to be a loss of revenue to the council, a loss of asset to the council, and there'll be impact on the 2021 long-term plan as well. While that, and furthermore, the, the government is pushing this through, pushing this project through pretty fast. And I'm not too sure why they are pushing it too fast, lack of clarity and accountability. So definitely no for this particular project.
Okay, next up, Ben. Have you got the mute on?
Sorry, everyone has gets one. I wish this question was phrased slightly differently. Do you want pipes to continue to burst in the CBD sewage to run down our streets or not? Because that's a choice that's on the table here. Yep, it is a bureaucratic reform and it's probably not the most perfect reform that can get through. But the status quo is untenable. So that's the absolute reality that we're faced with. Just a really interesting point because I think that unfortunately, and I say this running as a Labour candidate, there is a partisan lens that's put on this reform. If you take your mind back to a certain time when Judith Collins was the leader of the National Party, she appointed a little-known politician known as Christopher Luxon to be the local government as her spokesperson for the National Party and said, hey, go out and put a position on what we need to do on water reform. And it was very interesting that what he came up with was very close to the free waters reform. The co-governance side wasn't in there, but inherently he said, yeah, we need more centralisation and the government support of this. So I do feel that there's a unfortunately large amount of politicisation that's gone into this reform and what is a very boring reform. It is about building entities that can have leveraged their scale to get better rates on borrowing and investment and marginal cost. It is not a particularly exciting reform. So it's always worth putting that through. And, you know, I honestly think if we didn't have the co-governance aspect in this, it would be a hell of a lot less charged of a issue nationwide. And that's quite sad, but that's been leapt on as an opportunity to take away from the decision. So, hey, look, if the National Party wants to actually put forward something better than free waters, that would be fantastic. That would be great to have an even better one if Wellington retains its watership, water ownership, and we have even more money coming through. But so far, they've made no indication that they want to go with that. So status quo, free waters, it's free waters all the way. I will add, though, we do want to make sure that there is good governance in there. And there is some reason for some concerns. If you look at how fluoridation of water was handled in Wellington Water, they stopped putting fluoride in the water for, I think, about nine months before anyone thought, oh, we better tell the councillors this. So I do take the credit, the concern around centralisation and having these bureaucratic entities. But do you want the status quo or do you want Wellington to get on with it?
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Okay, so we'll now put me back into the grand old seat and I wonder when John O'Pennefitch will reappear soon. Thank you. Okay, so our second most asked question in our question box after free waters reform. Could you please share your thoughts on the COVID-19 vaccination and whether you have any affiliations with Voices for Freedom, Freedom Rights Coalition or any other organisation involved in the occupation in Parliament? And Tony, you get to go up first.
Yeah, so first, straight up, I have no affiliation for any of those groups and, and no affiliation with lots of other groups as well. No, I have no affiliation for, I don't know who they are. I don't know anyone who's a member. No, I have no affiliation for them. I don't know who they are. I don't know anyone who's a member. I've met some people in my dorm room who are supporters of Voices for Freedom. My thoughts on the COVID-19, it's been a strange, strange time. My daughter's going with public health, so I've actually had a bit of an inside run with the COVID-19. But at the very beginning, when it was very uncertain, you know, the need for vaccination, to have everyone vaccinated was very justified. As we've learned more and as the force COVID's broken out in New Zealand, I think that the landscape's changed a bit. And so I think it's much more of a choice, a bit like masking. It's out and about now. Vulnerable people are still vulnerable. But I think also there's an element of people who, not that they want to get out, actually they're not even thinking about it. They've moved on already. And so they're just ignoring the COVID stuff to a certain extent. We've got to make sure that that stuff that we require of people is achievable and reasonable. And so that's where I'm at. So hopefully we can get away from the COVID stuff and get on with getting with many other issues and crises that are facing us. Thanks.
Okay, next up, John.
Thanks, Sam. So I am not affiliated with Voices for Freedom, Freedom Rights Coalition or any other organisation. I'm working currently in the police building, so just up from the site which was occupied. And, you know, I think it was the wrong way to protest. I am vaccinated. I had to be for one of the roles I was doing. It was a specific requirement. Otherwise, I wouldn't be employed in that role. But I think that the restrictions went on for too long and they became very divisive towards the New Zealand public. And I did actually meet a woman on the weekend who was vaccinated and had quite a severe reaction, which meant that she couldn't have the second vaccination. So she actually did lose quite a bit of her income and I did feel for her quite a bit.
Okay, next up, yep, there we are, Ravine.
Yep, I don't have any affiliations with any of the organisations that is mentioned in your list. And why should I have such an affiliation when we live in a beautiful country? We can always have amicable relations and a peaceful way of dealing with things. So definitely not with any of that. In terms of COVID vaccination, for me, it's a mandatory because my workplace requires that. At the time where it was a mandatory requirement. But we should understand, given on circumstances of people's health condition, for the consultation with doctors would be much more recommended and giving the choice to the people how it should be dealt with. So yes, thank you.
Okay, next up, Ben.
Yeah, absolutely. No affiliation. I think if your group wants to put out the political rhetoric that leaders should be hung or tried or executed, you're just beyond the pale of what is good and fair political debate. And it's really disappointing that we have these groups in the country that goes there. You'll notice ones like VFF are already moving on to the next grift as we loosen up COVID restrictions. They're now thinking, oh, how do we keep this going? What's our next issue? So they're importing a lot of US culture issues. Now you're seeing trans people being put in the spotlight, for instance, at sport because it's another way to keep that grift and keep that fear and that motivation going because they need to find their money somehow for them to keep doing what they're doing. So no affiliation, just real distaste for that we've moved this way into a society where these groups can gain such legitimacy through peddling what is such mistruth and falsehoods. And it doesn't matter whether it's just a den. Christopher Luxon, Nicola Willis, probably his next PM. No one in that office deserves to be told that they should be tried or hung or executed or that rhetoric should never be normalised.
Exactly, that's right. And yeah, once you hit that point, you've put yourself beyond the point of, hi, I've just read to kill you. Can I have a reasonable conversation with you now? You've kind of shifted the bar a bit too far there. Next up, Jenny. What's your response?
Thanks, Sam. Yep, I've had all my vaccinations. Everyone in my family has had all our vaccinations. I know it was a really difficult time, but I think we need to reflect on the fact that we're pretty lucky in New Zealand. We had one of the best public health responses to COVID in the world. And that came with some challenges and hardships for people, but on the whole, we were very, very lucky. And I just want to say, of course, I'm not affiliated with any of those groups. I think it's really frightening that we need to be aware that those groups, it's not really, as Ben said, it's not really necessarily about the COVID restrictions or being anti-vaccination. It's about spreading disinformation and really trying to tear at the fabric of democracy, which is what we've heard from some of these candidates who are trying to make the country ungovernable. So I think it's just important that we all just speak up for the things that we do believe in and say that, you know, I do believe strongly in public health advice and expertise. I think we're incredibly lucky to have a vaccination so quickly that works so well. And those are the messages that we need to continue to share.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so hard-hitting question number three, which is one very, very close to my heart. And I think many of years would definitely be, you know, something that I think we missed out this time to see campaigning happening there. The recent closure of the Johnsonville market due to the renovations have shown that even with the latest changes to the district plan in order to move the site, the market would still need to pay another $50,000 in council consent charges. It would require to do a full-scale notified resource consent on a new site, even with the changes made, meant to make community events like this easier to set up. What would you do to make meaningful change in the district plan, allowing not only Johnsonville to regain its market, but for other suburbs in Wellington to start their own community markets? Let's start off with Tony.
Hello. So I've got a card to play. Have a night because, so what I want to do is, I actually want Ben to ask this. I'm not backing it. I just want to go with the order because I think it's only fair that Ben and I, I tell you the reason why, is Ben brought this issue to the Johnsonville Community Association. And he outlined it very eloquently and he's got some ideas on the change. And if I say them, it sounds like it's fair on Ben. So can I play my card in a way that means I can answer the question later on, Sam, and let Ben go first?
Okay, now let's kick off with Ben then.
Oh, thank you, Tony. That's actually that camaraderie Tony was talking about, we as Takapu candidates. You look at any of the other wards and then meet the candidates' events and they're quite feral and we're very lucky in this ward. Maybe it's just because we live in the best part of Wellington, we can all chill out a little bit. So anyway, to the question. So yeah, this was one, obviously, Tony, I had a bit of conversation on. And the more that I dove into it, the harder it was to get you an easy answer, Sam. So I talked to Wellington City Council about what's the issue with Johnsonville in particular. And it's obviously that it's zoned residentially at Johnsonville School, not for a mixed use. So that was what required the initial resource consent. And even under the district plan, basically, where a school, because assuming the market's most likely going to a school, is going to take, the zoning of that area is going to take precedent. So even as the JCA discussion there was, well, do you go in and make a citywide change where you just say schools are mixed-use zones, full stop? That would be the easiest way to do it. And that would pretty much let anyone be able to do any type of event at one of those areas and not have to pay the compliance costs. Of course, there could be some unintended consequences that come off the back of that for residents, you know, in small schools or areas where they have roading access issues. So that felt a little bit too far. So then it goes to you to go to the other one where you say, well, do we make an exception just for the Johnsonville market, given that the $50,000 in compliance costs were paid in the earlier? Reality is I haven't actually quite lathered on where we fall on that. And I'm hoping to, if I'm there, the council rely on the advice and expertise of officers to get us to a place that sort of sits in between that median. I think that community markets by and large are a great thing. Johnsonville Market was a really strong institution here, giving consumers a choice that wasn't the double countdown that is down the road is a really, really important thing. And it just brought people together and it's inspired micro-commerce and all those things that are absolutely fantastic. So yeah, landing on how do you enable it across the city? I don't quite have the answer there that without, that you lead to a bunch of unexpected consequences, but I absolutely want to see that the ability for markets and community markets to set up without those $50,000 resource consent fees hanging overhead.
So that could be something like replicating the rules of the Johnsonville, the resource consent conditions that were set on the Johnsonville market at Morgan Street. Possibly that could be the baseline that could be possibly used as the template to set up markets across the city.
Yeah, something along those lines. It definitely needs a layer of council officer advice to get it right. So, and you know, as a councillor, that is your job to put forward the ideas, but not necessarily to write the policy yourself. So that's really where I'm on it. How do we take the conditions that are there, easily replicate them and make it easy for other places to do it the same, while still giving the residents some say in their community? Because, as you know, there was some validity to some concerns around the Johnsonville market when you had trucks backing in at 5.30 on a Sunday morning initially, which was what was happening. And that's not fair for residents as well.
Yeah, no, certainly. Okay, next up, Tony, since we'll get back to your response, since you've threw the bat and the bird around, but I think that was a wise approach because we probably got the best answer we could.
Yeah, yes, it certainly has been outlined as a councillor. You want to find solutions and some of these bodies are quite small. There's a couple of ideas that I would raise. One is a much stronger idea to support pilots. And certainly when you've got a good idea, I think it's important that maybe people, if they've got a good plan and such like, they can pass certain criteria, that they should be able to pilot a market for one or two events without having to get the whole resource consent. I think that's got merit. The other thing too is it's just that if it's going to cost $50,000 and the council insists on that happening, that it's such a community purpose thing that the council would come to the party and help fund that in terms of a grant. So it might be $50,000 straight up, but it could be that we can do something to say, because it's a community event, we can make that eligible also for some council support so that the real number would be less. So, but yes, absolutely, being engaged with the local things. And, you know, because there's dozens of these different ideas and initiatives happening across the suburbs. Being engaged and working through what the officers is as easily as important.
Okay, yes, and I do remember it felt like it was the local town square. Next up, Ravine.
My point of view is community markets is pertinent. It's important that we have community markets in respective suburb. One in Tawa is quite, it's not too bad. It's not around the residential area. It's within the vicinity of a shopping complex mall. So Johnsonville could do something similar. It is also fair to understand that residential people at wee hours in the morning, it's a bit of troublesome. But in terms of council perspective, I would really say that the council should get behind and support this kind of markets and work on the consent charges more positively rather than just getting a $50,000 bill charged over to business people. And also, community markets connects people, community market. We get to know a lot of people during the marketing, when we are in the market. It's a small community, so we build up strong relationships. So that's my point of view.
Okay, next up, Jenny.
Thanks. Yeah, I think a lot of it has already been said. But council is doing a lot more to try and make it easier for some of these similar pop-up events or food trucks and other sorts of things. We've been working on a new trading and public places policy that kind of encourages and makes it easier for food trucks or coffee carts to set up in places that are on the town belt and those sorts of things. And I think we need to bring that sort of same spirit of innovation to this problem and figure out how we can make it easier for these events. Because it's not a challenge if you just want to run an event once, but when you've got a recurring weekly event, that's where it becomes an issue. So I think we need to think about, can we, as we've said, can we make a template for a consent so that there's one that we can just use for everywhere? What are the ways that we can streamline it so that we do allow for, you know, neighbours to be heard, but for these events which create great community spirit? And also can really support entrepreneurship and, you know, some of the creative markets in the city, people have gone on to have their own wee business. So we want to see more of that in the city.
Okay, next up, John.
Thanks, Sam. Well, as you know, I do actually run two markets every year. So I run the Winter Market in Chutton Park and also the Johnsonville Rotary Christmas Market coming up on the 3rd of December in Johnsonville. So, yep, so hopefully you'll be there. I think one of the issues, of course, is size. Being at the Tawa markets, it's much smaller. And the markets I run are generally smaller as well, so they're a lot easier to coordinate and a lot easier to run. So unfortunately, you can be the victim of your own success, but the larger you get. In terms of the council charges, that's just ludicrous, $50,000. I'd look at a way to get around that. Grant ideas a good one, or just waiving the charges. Or we're moving through a fast-track consent process as well. But I think people want these markets, which is a key one, but then sometimes the residents don't want them there as well. So there can be conflicting items.
Yes, Morgan Street was very interesting on that one. Okay, now let's get off to closing statements on why the Takapu Northern Ward voters should give, was it you? They should give you their first preference vote. Let's start off with Ben.
Hey, thanks, Sam, and thanks for all the work you do with the Ballad and putting these on across Wellington. That's certainly a Herculean effort. Look, this is an area I know intimately. It's a community I love being a part of. I grew up down the road in Nio. I've been in this, went to Rado intermediate, went to Onslow College. I used to go to Zampelli's in the mall as a toddler. It hasn't changed much. So I used to go to Dressmart in Tawa, thinking if I just bought the right item of clothing, the girl I had a crush on in high school would finally say yes to going out, alas, not to be. But it's an area that is dear and dear to my heart. And at the heart of it, as a representative for the Takapu Northern Ward, I'm going to fight and advocate for this community to be a better place than it is today. It's already a great place, but we can all strive to do better. I'm going to make sure we do those things around housing so that we enable new residents to come in here. Make sure that we keep up with the infrastructure that's required so that we can have a growing city. Make sure we have facilities for the functioning, like reopening Tawa Pool and making sure it doesn't get to a point where it has to close for months again. Looking at Sunday access to Tawa Library, all those things that really bring a community together. So those are the, and of course, getting the Granada North Sports Park built. So I think if I can achieve those things in three years as your councillor, we can objectively say Takapu Northern has a better place and that's what I want to do. And that's why I'm asking for your first preference vote.
Okay, next up, Tony.
Yes, so thanks to everyone who's been watching and thanks, Sam, for putting this together, this opportunity. And so we couldn't do this in person. I think it's a bit lighter in person. It hasn't been too bad online. Yes, so I want to be, I would like to represent my community in the Northern Ward. I've lived here for nearly 30 years, raised a family. I like suburban life and we are probably more suburban than the rest of Wellington. It's sometimes a bit of a concern that we have urban planners and sometimes just that they were suburban planners because some of the urbanness that sometimes keeps leaking up here and they are trying to apply things, fixes their problems in Newtown to Johnsonville and Tawa. And again, it comes back to the council really not listening. I want to be a councillor that's accessible, that I'll go out and visit and be contactable. And then bring that voice, bring those issues to the council table, making sure that issues of Northern Ward, be it the big things like the Fero Stream, erosion and sedimentation problem, or the small things, just like the Johnsonville market, that those are all represented and championed correctly. I also want to make sure that we're going to call things well. I think that is the priority. It's really a bit of a low bar to what can surge on the street is your target for a first-world city. And I think we can, you know, we need to focus on that before we can do some of the transformational stuff. And certainly that's the focus that I will bring to the table. And nicely, I really want to emphasise that I love this place, choose to be here. And there's a really, as I go out and about across the suburb, there's just so much happening. It looks like there's nothing happening. There's so much happening out here. And certainly getting that And certainly getting it all connected up and highlighted is another part. So yes, those things are what you want in a future council and please vote for an independent. Please vote for, you know, Tony Lando. Thanks. That's vote number one.
Okay, okay, next up, John.
Thanks, Sam, and thanks for hosting this event. It's been great, actually really enjoyed the online presence here. So let's start, first thing, I've got experience, lots of it, both through the business community in the last 25 years. Also my experience with chairing the community board for the last three and being on that board for six as well, with my rural community head on. And also the fact that I moved into the area in 1972. So I've seen Johnsonville grow, I've seen Tawa grow, I've seen Churton Park basically be established. And I've been through it, my father used to live in Paparingi, so I've seen that area peak and also flourish. So I know the issues, I'm a local champion, but I also want to focus on the citywide items as well. I know where I can add value and I think I can do that for the locals out here. I want to be a strong voice at the table in council and I want to be an advocate for the Northern Ward. I listen to people and I love meeting people. So I like to be open and approachable and I'll continue to do that in my capacity as a councillor if I'm elected. So please vote one for Johna Penovich.
Okay, next up, Jenny.
Thanks, Sam. I guess I would just be asking people to vote for me. I've had a great three years of experience on council. The work that I did particularly on the Meryl Tasklist for Three Waters and bringing those recommendations in unanimously just show that I can work on really challenging issues and find unity. And the experience of now being through three budget processes and understanding how that works and how we need to prioritise our investment in infrastructure we already have and make sure we're doing really good work looking after our assets. And then we can look at the next things that are important. And for me, that's about being climate-friendly and making sure that we're making climate-friendly investments in housing and transport, because that is really the big future-proofing thing that we need to do. And then beyond that, there are other worthy projects and great worthwhile things we want to be able to do for Wellington. We need to be able to provide more social infrastructure to support growth. But that's my priorities and that's what I'll be working, hope to work for you.
Okay, and next up, Ravine.
Yep. As a community serviceman arriving in this country 18 years ago in a cold, wintery morning, faced at the Johnsonville suburb at the bus station, facing the Johnsonville Mall. The mall is still in the same position, same perfect condition, no changes has taken place ever since then. But today I have changed and transformed to be a better person in terms of governance, operations, management, and a person that is well-connected to the city, connected to the ethnic communities, connected to the people in the northern suburb. And being part of the community is a privilege and pride that I am bringing to the table, bringing to the people of northern suburb. I want to communicate, I want to connect and I want to collaborate with a number of community boards, NGOs, safety patrolling communities to ensure there's safety, there's prevention in terms of crime, in terms of housing, in terms of infrastructure and transportation. And being a meddling staff working for Transdev, I've got a huge amount of experience in the transportation industry as well. I bring that knowledge to the people here and to serve the city that I love so much. I want to give back to the community and I will do my best and be an extraordinary councillor if I'm elected. Vote one for Ravine. Thank you. Norera, tinakoto, tinakoto, tinakoto.
Okay, thank you for that. And thank you to all five of you for appearing on It's in the Ballot. And an extra special thanks to Jenny for being another incumbent to appear on It's in the Ballot. You have not suffered the Wellington City Council curse. So yeah, that seems to be the trend there. How have you all found it tonight?
Interesting. Great thing, Sam.
This is actually our second online. We did one with the Newlands Paparingi Progressive Association online too. So I like to think we're a bit more technologically advanced up in the Northern Ward too.
Yes, even though that wasn't the plan for tonight, but it seems to have been just the way it's panned out. It's what happens when you find out on Sunday, the venue you booked wasn't quite what it was meant to be. But hey, we made it work and, you know, we made this show happen. And I have to be honest, I'm very happy with the results that we've had delivered. I'm sure our voters and, what shall we say, our viewers who are voters are going to walk out of here more informed than they walked in with, which is what the goal of It's in the Ballot is. Okay, so let's bring up, so tomorrow night, we've got the La Hut constituency for the Greater Wellington Regional Council at the Little Theatre at 7pm. If you want to join us there, we've got over 300 seats available. On Thursday, we've got the Pakakariki Realmessy Ward for the Kepne Coast District Council at the Realmessy Bowling Club. And on Friday, we've got Northern Ward for the Hut City Council at the, oh, I'm trying to remember what the name is. It's basically the main community centre in Stokes Valley. And then on Sunday, we've got our final It's in the Ballot show for the Patanoi Ward of the Porora City Council at Patanoi School. So we've got nearly near the end of our season and we'll be continuing with replays every single day at 12 o'clock. This Sunday, however, we won't be because we will be, our broadcast equipment is getting used at an AGM where we do the Restream to be live at the same time. So we won't be doing that because one thing I learnt from Restream is you can only have one stream going on at once. So that's something we've discovered, but hey, you know, it's just one of those things. So yes, we'll see everyone back here tomorrow at 7pm. Have a good night.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Thanks for being agile and adaptable, it all went very well.
No problem, thank you for that.
Big thumbs up.
Okay.